Good morning. This is Mike Gillis. Welcome to the January meeting of the Manistie County Commission.
Right, the airplanes, you know, the experiences you have are incredible. You know, we used to have planes called Karen. They had real high tempo. The reason they had high tempo was because they said on their brakes lost. It actually took off so fast.
You know, I mean, I know that it's a lie, you know, but it's like, that's always.
Richard, you're ready?
Yeah. If you pull too fast, ooh.
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right. Call the meeting order. Please rise for the flag. Flag to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, ungod, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Commissioner Bergstrom, please give us the application. Father in heaven, be grateful that we have completed another fiscal year with positive balance. We realize that this would not happen without the full involvement and commitment of the staff and board at Manistie County. We are fortunate to have skilled and dedicated staff. We ask that you keep safe and keep healthy, our staff, board, and our families. Amen.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Batsor, here. Commissioner Bergstrom?
Here.
Commissioner Vance?
Here.
Commissioner Goodman?
Here.
Commissioner Jaques?
Here.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Here.
Commissioner Shaffer?
Here.
All right. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'm sorry, let me back up the meeting agenda.
Make that motion.
Motion, support for that? Support. Any discussion? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Now we need a motion for the consent.
I'll make that motion.
Support for items A, minutes of the December 20th, B, minutes of the January 2nd, and C, January 2017 monthly appropriations. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Batsor?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Vance?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaques?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaffer?
Yes.
Okay, we're up to public comment. Mr. Lefenin, anything for us?
Nothing new.
Mayor?
Nothing, thank you.
We will go on to Mr. Comerow.
You're up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Recognition, announcements, and correspondence. Do you have anything for us, Tom?
Just things that are on your desk. You have, thanks to the county clerk who was dedicated enough to spend probably her weekend and holiday yesterday doing the minutes for all your committee reports. You know, you had your meetings all on Friday, and they're sitting on your desk today, which will make it a little easier. Your committee assignment list is also on, the updated committee assignment list is on your desk. You probably have to update that again after you take care of central wellness today, but for the most part, everything is updated on that list. I did put the board rule change, I emailed you all the board rule change the first time, which was really wordy, and the county clerk and I talked, and she suggested a few things, and I went back and made it a little easier to read, I think. And so if you don't have any problem with that, that's what will be put into the, into the board rules. Did you all have a chance to look at that? Is that better? That was a little bit less wordy. And then, so I'll do that, and then the, I mentioned to a few of the commissioners that sit on technology and, and Green Team, Julie would like to get you to schedule the first meeting, first committee meeting, that's, those are two of the committees that haven't met yet, and we need to schedule that first meeting. Then at your first meeting, you can schedule the rest of the year. So if you could stop in to Julie's office, save her a lot of phone calls, if you could stop in there at the end of the meeting and kind of come up with a first meeting date and time. And I guess on the agenda, we'll get to the scheduling of the strategic planning meeting. I think that's everything that's on your desk.
Tamara gets you some dates for that?
She gave me some dates that she's not available, so we can, I'm sure we can schedule something. That's all I have.
All right. Russ? Now you're up.
Good morning.
Morning.
I don't have a lot to report today. I know that when I was here before, I had mentioned that I probably wanted to have someone come and talk to you about land banks today, but after talking with them more, they said that we should probably have some public meetings before we come to the board of directors to make sure that the public is on board and that everybody is. Yeah, so when we bring it to you, you know that the public is in agreement with what we're thinking about doing. I'm going to schedule those meetings sometime in February at Mr. Kaminsky's suggestion. I'm going to work with AES and have them help me schedule those meetings because that's what they're good at. I would have tried to do it sooner, but we had the field work for the audit, and I've been consumed by that since the first of the year, so now that that, the field work is over and done with, I'll be getting with them at AES and see if we can schedule some public meetings, probably two different public meetings. And if we can get it done before the February meeting, I'll have someone come and speak to you about land banks at that time. I have gotten copies of the organizing documents for the land banks, the intergovernmental agreements and bylaws and those kind of things, and so I'll be working on getting those set and established and have all that stuff ready to go once we move forward with it. But my goal is to have the land bank in place before the end of March when we do our final foreclosure on the tax recovery properties.
Russell, do you have a, like, a short summary, one or two page of the concept that you might want to hand out to board just so we all have a better understanding of the concept?
Yeah, I can, I can get you something like that.
It'll be okay.
I can do that.
Was either an article in our Mac? On land banks, I thought there was a big article in there too, on your publications.
We haven't talked about it in the committee.
Yeah, no, it's just one of those emails I come through.
We've never really had a need for a land bank up to this point, but it's getting to the point now where I think it's time for us to do that. There are some things that could be happening this year, in this year's foreclosure process, that would really, you know, benefit from us having a land bank here. That's my goal, is to have it in place by March 31st, and we will be letting you know when the public hearings and such are. Hopefully, that will be sometime early in February. And as I said, my last two weeks have been totally consumed by the audit. First, getting ready for them, and then all last week. There were five auditors here all day, every day, and it's, but it's over and done with, and things went well. I know that Joe Verlin, the chief who's in charge, gave a brief summary to the Ways and Means Committee, told them that things were going well. We did finish with a surplus this year, and we will touch more on that when we go through the Ways and Means Minutes. There was a sheet that Mr. Kaminsky had prepared that was attached to the Ways and Means Minutes, and we'll touch more on what the actual surplus was at that time. That's all I have. Any questions?
Just a comment, I know Commissioner Jaques has a real strong interest in doing something with land banks. We need to keep her in the loop, as all of us.
Yes, yes.
She's oyster concerns many times to me.
Yeah, she's spoken to me as well. She will probably be your liaison to the, for the board on the land bank.
I was wondering, I know that we are going to have some sort of auditing process for the Drain Commission.
Yes, they're, they're actually coming back on the 25th. By the time we got something set up for last week, the Drain Commissioner was gone to his schooling, the new Drain Commissioner schooling, and so he wasn't available, and so the next time that they could come back was on January 25th. So just one of them is going to come back and work up there with Ken, and get in the Drain Commission office and take a look and see what's going on there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Russ. Okay, on to Ways and Means.
January 13th at 1:00 P.M. is Tad Kordas. Members present, all three members, Mark Bergstrom, Richard Schmidt, and Bo Shaffer. Member on the committee replacing Ken Hoyer. The first item is claiming summaries, and we hereby submit claims from December 14, 2016, through January 13, 2017, and a summary of the on-demand checks and bills for your review and approval. Tolls are $637,234.52 in on-demand checks and bills, and $718,338.83 in payroll. To a claim that allowed is of January 17, 2017, is $1,355,573.35. Now, that's three payrolls in that request. And I'll make a motion to approve the on-demand checks, bills, and payroll accepted in the amount of $1,355,573.35 in the same replacement file. Second?
Motion, support. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Vance?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaques?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaffer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batsor?
Yes.
The next item on the Ways and Means Committee is a request from Open Door Assessments Limited Liability Corporation, which is operated by Don Stabanski to continue using the commissioner's group meeting space with provision of an alcohol safety education, victim impact panel program, and economic crime presentations that are offered in the county account in 2017. The Alcohol Highway Safety Education Program, the Victim Impact Panel is operated by Mr. Stabanski. As of course, it is a educationally based prevention program, and is usually attended by the first offense drinking, drug impaired driver. These drivers are most often sentenced to attendance program by the 85th District Court or another district court. The group is not limited to only the county of Manistie residents. The rooms used, the agreement has been in effect for the past several years, with no known negative issues. Both the impact, victim impact, and Alcohol Highway Safety Education Program are offered on Saturdays, so they don't really impact us that much. On the following dates, and the dates are there. Open Door Assessments does not, does have professional liability coverage and promise liability. It is recommended that the room use agreement between Manistie County Open Door Assessments be renewed for the 2017 calendar year, with move by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Shaffer, to recommend the approval of the room use agreement between Manistie County and Open Door Assessments be renewed for the 2017 calendar year. And I'll make that motion.
Motion, support for that?
I'll support it.
Motion, support. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Vance?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaques?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaffer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batsor?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
The next item on the Ways and Means Committee agenda was payment of unused accumulated vacation second personal hours. It was moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Shaffer, to recommend approval of payment of unused accumulated vacation second personal hours to John Hagen, former undersheriff, in the amount of $9,836.51, became the elected sheriff of Manistie County effective January 1 of 2017, to be paid from the employee separation fund, and all members of committee want support. I'll make that motion.
Motion, support. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaques?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaffer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batsor?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Vance?
Yes.
Thank you.
There was another request, too, for unused, for payment of identified vacation personal hours to Mr. Jason Hay, former Chief Assistant Prosecutor, in the amount of $8,297.58, who now became the elected prosecutor. It was moved by Mr. Schmidt, and seconded by Mr. Shaffer, to recommend approval. I'll make a motion on that also.
Second.
Motion, support. Any discussion? Court, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Jaques?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaffer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batsor?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Vance?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
The next item was very much a pleasant news from Joe Verlin, founding auditor from Lokey Bridge Company, and of course, Russ, Baltimore, I too. Mr. Verlin reported there's a fund balance surplus of $235,406.35, plus $172,751 that was budgeted to the balanced revenue and expenditures, budgeted to balanced revenue and expenditures, but was not required to be transferred. So that was a really good news report, because again, we, this year finished in black in terms of $235,406.35, and we had set aside $172,751 from the fund balance, which we did not use. So again, that's about, at least four years in a row now, probably longer. Tom would know the actual date on that, but we've not only had a balance, but a surplus, so that was great news.
Many years.
Many years, yeah. Okay, let's see. There was a request for Bruce Schimke, maintenance supervisor, to purchase new software for the SLAG SMS door lock security system. Mr. Schimke indicated that it's obsolete and that it needs to be replaced. It was moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Shaffer, to recommend the purchase of Vanderbilt SMS Enterprise Upgrade in the first year of technical support, and had to exceed $3,660 from Allen Supply. There was two bids. This was the low bid. To be paid from the building and grounds contingency fund, or again, this is out of a contingency fund, which doesn't go to hit the general fund, so all three were in support of this action. And I'll make a motion on that, too.
Motion, support. Second. Further discussion?
Yes. Yes. What is this going to cover? Are these the old fob areas? Are we expanding? Are we going to get, like, one system to go in place?
Well, right now, we have two systems. One is the button fob, and one is the teardrop fob. The teardrop fob is the newest one that was replaced about five years ago. That's covered this door, the main entrance, and the main courthouse. The East and West wings are on the old system. To try to save some money when we did that, we kept, I kept all the old locks out of that to continue, continue on with this system, the old system, the oldest system, in case we needed it, so that we could upgrade it if we needed. At the time that the, the new teardrop system was installed, like I said, about five, six years ago, our, the operating system for, that we had at the county was Windows XP Professional. That system is obsolete. So the new system that we have, operating system is Windows 7 on the computer, so I need to upgrade that to Windows 7, and so that's what this request is, to upgrade to Windows 7 with the new software. It'll upgrade all the new, new locks, plus, as I left paperwork with everyone, the company that would be contracted to do that says that this software is good for the next five years beyond. So we're not dealing with an older software right away, but the Windows XP, I need to upgrade to Windows 7, so that's why I wanted to get this down on my end and pay for it out of contingency surplus fund, so.
So the question that I have, Windows 7, I believe, is a 2009 operating system, and I believe that Windows 10 is the current Windows version.
Correct.
And I saw that this particular system that you're requesting, this particular software, would also be upgradable to Windows 10 as well?
Correct. So it'll do both Windows 7, Windows 10, as the email that I got from Cody, which is who I'm dealing with at Allen Supply, stated that they just went through training in October of 2016 with this new software, so this is the latest update that is, will be good for the next five years.
Bruce put on your desk an email that.
Yeah, and some backup for it.
Well, I should also mention, too, that in this, $3,660, $1,500 is in there for one year of maintenance agreement.
That's correct. I want to at least get the first year in there, you know, which that gives us 10 hours of support, because that old system is just, is causing some problems.
So we're going to have capability of checking login and log out times?
Absolutely.
We've always had that.
Yeah, right, but it's, this new system, it'll be a lot easier. This new software, if you wanted to, you could hardwire every lock to where you could, I could do everything right at the computer, so it has that capability for the future. So if there's, and it could do wireless, but we really didn't want to do that because it would also be hacked in the system.
At some point, probably in next year's budget or whatever, we need to upgrade the rest of the building to the new system, because the old system, like Bruce said, we're using parts from the replacement, and that's, those aren't going to last so long, and then we're going to be without anything, and if something goes wrong, we're not going to have any lock system. So we did have the building because it was so expensive a few years ago. We need to do the rest of the building now, and my only concern with that is, is that how long is the new system going to be before that goes out of, you know, today's technology, things change so much that we put, when we put the old system in back in 2000, that was the latest and greatest thing, and all of a sudden, a year or two later, we found out, they're not making that stuff anymore. So I don't know how you prevent that, but.
That's where I was going, you know, it's like, what's our process, you know, what's going to be our plan here?
Well, Vanderbilt is the software company worldwide, so SLAG, I don't know if you're familiar with SLAG, they've been around for many, many years, so SLAG and Vanderbilt came together with this new lock system, and like they're saying, they've just been retrained, should be good for, before we have to do anything for the next five, four, five, six years, so, you know, it's.
One other question that I have, in one of the quotes that was also given from one of the other bids, there was a question about lockdown capability. Would this system have a lockdown capability for the whole building?
The locks are, they automatically relock, so as far as you're talking about, just if there was an.
If there were an emergency and the whole building needed to be locked down?
Not unless you hardwire the entire system.
But you said that this, this system has that capability?
Does have that capability.
We do have some procedures that have been put in place by emergency manager that is better now, you know, like, a lot of doors, like county clerk's door, the treasurer's door, those, those doors are locked all the time, and you can't get in unless you have a key or they let you in. In our office, because there's mail and everything, people can walk in at any time, but we've got some procedures to easily lock. I won't get into all those, but if something were to happen, that's, it's not the greatest, I mean, we still have some vulnerability, but I worry about our office.
Have we had training for active shooter here?
Not active shooter, we've had, you know, the first 28 years or so that I was here, we never even had a fire drill. About two years ago, I think we had our first fire drill, we had another one, and I think there's a plan, the emergency management coordinator was planning to have an active shooter drill this year.
It's coming up soon.
It's coming up.
Schedules are.
Well, I, I think this is a great idea, and I think upgrading is great with the plan possibly for next year to keep moving forward.
Correct.
And getting all our fobs to be the same, and our system to be as advanced as possible.
Yeah, because like, this, this lock here is a new lock, and once you fob it, the door automatically relocked, relocked. So if there was an issue, you get to shut the door, it's locked. You don't have to fumble with anything. That's, that's, most of these locks in the building are, are that way. Some of them are changeable, but.
Depending on your authority.
Correct.
Bruce, I think you threw out a figure to basically upgrade the whole system.
Originally, we did, we did half the building, that was 42 locks, that was around $75,000, I think, somewhere in that, so we're looking at, we're not looking at as much, but I would say it's going to be between 50 and 75 to do the rest of the building. But the, the main doors that are hardwired, that was all done in an original upgrade, like the front doors, so that's a big expense. The standalone locks are a little bit less money than that, so.
So this is kind of a stopgap, I guess, in a sense.
Yes, sir. We can upgrade anytime to do the rest of the building, so it's.
You're fine getting money.
It's fine getting money.
Well, I think that would be a, a great idea to submit as we go during next budget period.
Yes, because, and I'll have that, all that, because the old, the old fob system, the button fobs, it's, we really need to get out of that, because it's just, if we lose certain factors anywhere.
We had a rather large fund balance in our capital improvement fund for several years, and we've done a lot of projects, and now our capital improvement fund is kind of unhealthy, so we need to start building that back up or budgeting money for some of those things. We do have some money budgeted this year to replace a good portion of the roof at the Sheriff's Department that's needed badly, and so that's about, that's the main project that we have this year.
Well, when I look at this, too, you know, I, this, I, I kind of wonder if it skates on the edge of technology, too, as a cost. It's part of our integrated technology system, so it's not just a capital, you know, there's a budget over there, too.
But I already asked her and all that, so I, I will have it all prepared for you.
The problem we have when you say, let's pay for it now, let's pay for it, it's really all coming from the same budget, just what's allocated for what, where you want to tap. So, yeah, we need to either put it in one place or the other, but we've got to.
Where you want to prioritize it.
And sometimes when you talk about fund balance, as you can see, we'll get into this a little bit more in a few minutes, but our auditor is saying our fund balance is healthy at about 22%. The recommendation is to have a 20% fund balance, so when you, when you talk about using fund balance in your budget, it's better to use it for those one-time expenses, for capital expenses or technology expenses, rather than saying, okay, let's spend it on just general operating, because you don't always have that fund balance.
I just, part of my underlying concerns are that, you know, we are, we are probably not as advanced as we could be for technology, and I think that we need to be very sure about where we're putting things, or identifying. Technology is now becoming a large umbrella that's going to support several of our buildings, and these type of systems, you know, I can see you looking into all kinds of buildings with just one system, you know, but it's got to be supported in technology, too. So I think as we move forward, we have to look at these things as the impact. It's not just one area, it's, it might be something, a combing, like, or moving, moving some of this stuff to the right places.
Right, we've come, and, and we've come a long way in this last couple of years, even our telephone system has so much more to it.
I'm going to drag you out, I'm going to drag you in 20 seconds.
Well, we are.
Tom, you don't make a lot before you get you there, so.
Right, buddy. Come on.
I'm coming.
All right, we're, we're, we're.
I'm coming slowly.
Any, any other further questions for Bruce on your system?
The only thing I was going to mention is we do have a security plan, and we've made investments in security, so, you know, we have to just keep.
made investments in security, so, you know, we have to just keep upgrading it.
You've come... If you would have walked, and I think anyone that's worked here would agree, I mean, the security in the building, the video, which is going to be upgraded because of a couple of grants we received, the, the door lock system, our system for moving around in the building, we've come so far, we've got a long way to go yet, but we've come a long way with our security. The protections we've given in the treasurer, in the clerk's office, and in our court system, they're not perfect, but we've come a long way from 15 years ago, or 10 years, even 10 years ago.
We don't want to kid ourselves either, because I don't think that's bulletproof glass, somebody could take a shot at that.
None of this is, but there is bulletproof glass in the building in, in certain areas.
Like, if you shoot out that door, they'd be in there in a minute.
You gotta remember, you gotta remember too, where, where cap, our, our funds came from. Remember, we were saving money for a project that the tribe paid for, that sewer system, that's where a lot of our capital improvement money came from.
Well, that's true, we were...
We were saving, and we didn't have enough money to pay for that. We were lucky the tribe said they would pay for that. So, I mean, when we get into spending money, remember where it came from. You could thank them up there, because that was something we didn't have enough money for.
Okay, so, we continue to digress, but it's all good info. Any other questions for Bruce in regard to the locks? Okay, have any questions, feel free calling. I hate to... Court call it all, please.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Burksdahl?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaques?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item is the review of the 2015, 2016 year-end financial summary. And Mr. Pomeroy presented this at the committee meeting. You have a summary there, I'll just hit the highlights, and you can ask Mr. Pomeroy if he has any questions. Mr. Comiskey reviewed the 2015, 2016 year-end financial summary dated January 13, 2007. Total general fund expenses are, for 2015, '16, are $10,528,116, $10,528,116, and 65 cents. And we had budgeted $10,826,666. So, the department contingency transfers total $31,797. Total general fund expenditures were $10,528,116, and 65 cents. And general fund revenues were $10,795,320, with a budget of, again, $10,826,666. Therefore, there's a surplus of $234,236,35, plus the planned transfer of $172,752,000, which was set aside, but is now not needed to be transferred. There are numerous ways that budget surplus monies can be used. Mr. Pomeroy recommended to use a portion, $195,000, of the surplus amount to be used to pay for the special assessment of McGinnis and Kettle Hole drains. If it's paid off, $25,000 can be saved in interest over the 10-year period. It was moved by Burksdahl, second by Schaefer, to recommend the 2015, '16 budget surplus to use to pay off the county's portion of the special assessment of the McGinnis and Kettle Hole drain in the amount approximately $195,000. All three members were supportive. I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
Just move back and everything, I want to cook them again.
I want to hear from Mr. Pomeroy.
We're not going to say that.
Well, we, we kind of discussed this, I don't know if it was here, if it was at the town show, I know it was Man of the Town Show, it was in the show month. And that was in regard to, I think February is the date or the month to pay, to pay this off with no penalty.
Correct.
And we have new drain commissioner, has he had a chance to confirm that this is the entire package?
Not yet. I did get the assessment roll in my office, it was delivered to me by previous drain commissioner. And our portion was $185,000 and change, I don't have that with me. If, if we paid it in full, and that's without any interest, if we pay it over a 10-year period, it's going to cost us an additional $25,000. And, you know, this is a, a one-time thing, something that we haven't budgeted for, that we need to pay, you know, we need to at least pay one year of it, which will be about $20,000 that we haven't had budgeted. We do have the surplus, and so that's what my recommendation was, is to, we have the surplus money, we might as well pay it. It'll save us from having to budget $20,000 a year in our budget every year for the next 10 years. That'll free up an additional $20,000 in our budget each year. It just make, to me, it makes a lot of sense.
I wouldn't argue that point, but the only question for me is, is if we knew what the final number was, what happens if it comes in less? Do we get, do we get any of that money back?
Yeah, we, it, it will, yes, we would get, we'd refund it.
If you see the motion, get a final figure out.
Yeah, when, when Mr. Hilliard is back in the office, I will sit down with him and work with him. Before we make any payment, we will sit down and work together and come up with the final numbers, and present those numbers to the board, make sure that all of the bills for the drain are paid, that all of the expenses are paid, everything is done and over with, and we have a final amount for that drain, and then what our portion of that will be, before anything is actually paid.
This is contingent upon being able to get the bills from the people that you know about.
Well, Mr. Schmidt is very good at, at telling you about things until after the fact.
But those people who want to get paid are going to make sure that we have the bills, you know, and they will make sure.
There's no sheriff in town.
In fact, Mr. Hilliard has already commented that some of the contractors are calling, you know, about it, getting paid.
Well, it's a good point. I think we need to make sure that we have the actual figures.
Right. The only, the only unknown at this point is the hospital's assessment. We may be responsible for the hospital's assessment, depending on how that goes. The hospital's not finalized, so we're responsible for it.
Not for the whole thing, just for the, would we, or would just be the portion?
Probably be just the portion.
For the 10, for the one year of 10.
That's what I would guess, but I don't know that.
They might argue differently.
I don't know. Well, question might be... Keep in mind too, that this is not the kettle hole situation, where you're paying the assessment of the residents. The residents are still being assessed, this is just the county's portion, which is generally 25%.
25%.
So, actually, the motion should say, up, pay up to $195 pending finalized billing to be paid in February.
That probably would be a better...
And the $195 also includes the $10,000 that we are going to be assessed for the kettle hole drain, which is a one-time assessment. Yes, there was another assessment put on the tax bills for kettle hole.
For maintenance.
Now, that one will probably change.
It actually keeps giving.
Because it's $185,000 for the McGinnis drain, plus an additional $10,000 that we're going to be assessed for kettle hole.
Going to be, or are?
There was an assessment roll on, and, and it was on the, the December taxes.
And we got hit for 25% the same as the...
Yes.
Tom, when will the, the hospital sale, the hospital go through?
Soon, within the next few months.
Within, are we wise to wait?
I can tell you, I can, I can tell you that one of the holdups with the hospital sale right now is, is trying to change their retirement plan, which is very, very complicated, because you're going from a, a public employee's retirement plan to a private, and there's lots of issues with that, and it's taking some time for them to iron all that out. I think just about everything else is done, but when I talk to Mr. Wilson, that's one of the holdups.
I'm just wondering if it would make more sense to, depending on which money we'll save here, to hold out paying it until the hospital's been sold, and then the hospital is their responsibility.
Well, we're not paying, this, this $195 doesn't include anything with the hospital.
Doesn't include anything with the hospital.
Yeah, that, that changes nothing other than we possibly could see another bill.
We're assuming we're not paying that at this point.
Okay.
Okay, so, we have a motion, is it amended as discussed, or...
We didn't make a motion.
I thought, there was a motion as a support.
Yeah, we can amend it, we can amend it. I think I'm going to do it anyway.
Yeah, you do.
Want to amend it to include pending finalized billing to be paid in February? Oh, with Jeff's language, up to $195,000 with...
That's, also now we got to add the kettle hole in there, they said that'd be a separate motion.
The $195 includes the kettle hole as well.
I think if you just say, the same exact motion, except you're saying, instead of approximately, you could say up to $195,000.
Up to $195,000. Pending finalized billing.
You ready for now? I do. It's going to make me there, too.
All right, any other discussion in regard to this? Okay, Court call it all, please.
Did you have more rest where you said?
No, not in this session.
Okay. Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Burksdahl?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaques?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment, you know, the, when Joe Gerlin was in, he said that at the end of our last audit, we had a 20% fund balance, with the surplus that we're going to have this year, it'll be, you know, close to 22%. The recommended fund balance is a minimum of 17%. So, we have a very healthy fund balance. So, if we do need to look at making some capital improvements, or if we want to do the locks or something like that, we shouldn't be afraid to spend some of that fund balance if it's necessary to upgrade things that are, you know, we feel are really necessary.
I'd like to connect one more point, too. During the discussion, you kind of hit upon the fact that there was $31,000 transferred into contingency funds, that is not part of that, of that $235,000 that you talk about. And in fact, that $31,000 brings what we had over in our budget almost to $270,000.
Yeah, if you didn't have that, that's a good point. If you didn't have that policy, when you give a portion back, you would have another $31,000. Now, that money has not been spent, but it's being put into department contingencies under specific departments and elected officials' offices, so that when Bruce or Rob, like they just did, came to you with some things they want, we have a process for doing that, and it's kind of like their own little savings account. And they have to get approval from you to do it. It's not just automatic, so, that's why they come with some of these small items sometimes, but it's a, it's a process rather than just, it just, rather than us just, them just coming to me and saying, I'm going to buy this stuff out of contingency surplus, they actually have to get approval from you, because it's really unbudgeted money, so.
But it, but it's also, so they also, in developing my budget, I would say, okay, when I go through my budget, I want 20% of my total budget over here for this, like this contingency, or is there a percentage that everybody determines, or is it individual?
No, they, they, they budget for what they think they're going to spend.
Okay.
Then we go in and usually cut it. And then, and then, and then, if there's something that comes up in mid-year, and they don't have, if they only have $2,000 budgeted in equipment, and they had specific needs, and they buy those things out of their budget without your approval, they don't really need those unless it's a certain, you know, this is a big item. If they run into an issue, like Rob, for instance, did not foresee that he was going to need this computer, or Bruce didn't foresee he was going to need this, this lock of software, then he can come to the Ways and Means Committee and say, I have $20,000 in my contingency surplus, can I draw from that and buy this piece of equipment?
I think the answer to your question is this, if Rob's budget is $10,000, and he only spends $8,000 of it, we have a $2,000 surplus in Rob's budget, 50% of it comes back in general fund, the other 50% goes to contingency fund. So, it was money that was budgeted, but not used.
We don't, we don't do it with the entire budget. We don't consider personnel expenses. If you have a big surplus in personnel, we don't consider that. We don't consider any fringe benefit expenses, because sometimes those are our responsibilities, and we're either not budgeting correctly, or there's a surplus there, or a deficit, we don't penalize them for that. We don't give, like the courts, jury fee money, 50% back, or, or appointed attorney money, or in the jail, we don't give money back for jail meals, or utilities, or things like that. Because if you did that, the jail, the jail had a huge surplus, a huge surplus. You would have 50,000 or 75,000 going through the contingency surplus. So, we just use basic office supplies, postage, travel, the things, equipment, the things that we have.
Yeah, where I'm going with this is, again, trying to bring it back to a centralized idea that I just bought 10 laptops, and in buying those together, I saved $5,000. So, what I go through is every department and say, who needs this, where are you at with yours here, is this a 2006 laptop, thought we got to replace that? Or, if we're going to get Windows 10 in here eventually, you know, buying the licensing fee and then figuring out what we need on top of that, just bringing all those departments together.
We, we have done that with technology. We've refined our technology budget in the last few years, where we pay for all maintenance contracts, all, there's a, there's a list that Gordon gives us every year of, of needs that are central to everyone. There's a list of how many computers are, laptops are being replaced on a rotating basis, like 15 a year, those are all in the technology budget.
So, Rob was assisted with, like, this is the best computer for you to get, because you'll be able to download this, this, and this, and the next, or did he have to spend all his time researching that?
In, in most cases, Gordon would help us with that. In Rob's case, he probably knew enough about it where he didn't have to go to Gordon. It's different, too.
The request for the workstation that I performed was a little bit different, too, because it was all based on whether my department was going to receive the revenue sharing grant. So, if I had received the grant, we weren't going to purchase that, that hardware system. But since I did, it was necessary to operate the software.
I, I just keep coming back to platforms, you know, if we have a platform built here, if we're moving to Windows 7 here, you know, we know we need to move, you know, just always having a platform that we can always build off of.
In technology, that's what we do.
Yeah.
We, we do do that.
Got you, really.
I know, I said we do.
All right. Well, the last item, then...
We sure got a vote on that. Did you get a vote on that? No, I have a vote. That's amended, make amendment motion.
The last item is, Mr. Comiskey provided proposed 2017, 2018 budget calendar, and I think you have that already. And it was moved by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Schmidt, to recommend the approval of the FY 2017, '18 budget calendar, and all members of committee were in support. And I'll make the motion to accept that.
Tom, do you want that calendar in the minutes? I probably should have put that in there.
Okay, all right. I guess I don't...
based on whether my department was gonna receive the revenue sharing grant. So if I had received the grant, we weren't gonna purchase that, that hardware system. But since I did, it was necessary to operate the software.
I, I just keep coming back to platforms, you know, if we have a platform built here, if we're moving to Windows seven here, you know, we know we need to move, you know, just always having a platform that we can always build off of.
In technology, that's what we do.
Yeah.
We, we, we do do that.
Got you, really.
I know, I said, yeah.
All right.
Well, the last item, then.
No, I have a vote. That's amended, amended motion.
The last item is, Mr. Kaminsky provided proposed two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget calendar, and I think you have that already. And it was moved by Mr. Schaper, seconded by Mr. Schmidt, to recommend the approval of the FY two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget calendar, and all members of committee were in support. And I'll make a motion to accept that.
Tom, do you want that calendar in the minutes? I probably should put that in there.
All right. I guess I don't...
It's in our back, is it? It's in the back, tail end of the back.
Yeah, I don't pick up the dates in there.
Yeah, it could be changed immediately, if it's scheduled.
The, the budget calendar has changed by just one or two days. I kept the same calendar, just updated the dates to fit two thousand seventeen. It, it basically starts the budget process in early April and ends it in August. You really don't have to have a budget adopted through your September meeting, but the last few years, you've tried to adopt it in August, which has worked out wonderful, wonderful. In most years, we've accomplished that. A couple years ago, we didn't, but that was mainly my fault, and so it just adopts the budget earlier and goes through the same process you've gone through. I assume, I'm just assuming that you're going to go through the same process with, without the Ways and Means Committee involvement, where I bring you a tentative budget and you, as a full board, meet budget study sessions. I think that's worked very well the last couple of years, rather than having more Ways and Means, and they make their cuts or additions to it, and then it comes to the board, and the board doesn't totally agree with that. It's better, I think, if it comes through the full board.
Committee of the whole.
Yeah, and you'll schedule in June, July, that's when you'll have two or three budget study sessions and go through a, through the normal process.
Maybe states are pretty close to last year's dates.
They're almost identical, yeah.
Do you have any motion in that support?
Any motion?
Any further discussions? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Donz?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaques?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaper?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
At the conclusion, then, we, we did set up the meeting times, dates for the Ways and Means Committee. It'll be the first Wednesday of the month at nine AM, set date for October. It'll be held on the third Wednesday at nine AM, and that includes Ways and Means Committee.
Motion to accept the Ways and Means Committee report?
I'll support it.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're on the personnel.
We met January thirteenth, nine AM. We didn't have any items requiring board action, but we did review our schedule and decided that we will be Friday mornings, first of July, September, first Friday of February. We have to bend back to the second Wednesday to this conference. Oh, yeah, we reviewed the recommendation of the Deputy Court Administrator job description for the Circuit Court. Lisa received a response back from the Margaret Notley of the District of Consulting Services, L C, on a grade recommendation for the Deputy Court Administrator job description for Circuit Court, as is here in your appendix. Matt Heinz, Circuit Court Administrator, had spoken with Mr. Notley concerning the position and the duties involved. The current ADR clerk duties will be absorbed into the Deputy Court Administrator job, and the position will be classified to a higher classification. Ms. Galla classified and clarified that she falls under the policy concerning promotions. For the committees to understand, the committee asked for information on Table A, as the classification announces across this and as to what appointment assessment involves. The recommendation of Mr. Notley has placed the Deputy Court Administrator position in grade five of Manistee County's court pay grade structure. It was moved by Mr. Bergstrom, seconded by Mr. Donz, recommending that approval of the Deputy Court Administrator position be placed in grade five, current step four of the Manistee County's court pay grade structure effective February one, twenty seventeen.
If I can just add that there wasn't any date discussed at the meeting, but I spoke with Lisa late Friday afternoon and figured since there was gonna be a change in the court that...
Yeah, I tried contacting Pat, Pat was already out of the office by the time we got to her, but I'm thinking it's going to probably be like a February first start date, but I don't know that for sure.
She didn't assume any of those duties yet, or?
Right, right. They were kind of, well, they had to wait till this meeting happened for the approval, and then I think they're going to get everything in place, and then the February.
If they don't have it in place by February first, that person will not be receiving the wage rate until they do. But I think, I think the color clerk's right that we should have something in there that says an effective date.
Is there a motion in the support?
I'll make the motion.
Support, support, okay. Any further discussion?
I also wanted to add in here that there was a discussion that that other position is now dissolved or eliminated.
It's consumed into this, basically, in place.
But that other job title is gone.
That, that place, that position has vanished.
Yeah, there is not an additional employee being hired under this.
Correct.
Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Can I just ask, do you want something in that motion that says effective February first or the date proposed changes in the court? I, I don't know. It's otherwise just stuck with February first.
Actual job creation is what I, what I would say. It's February first or actual job creation. You know, your, if your job isn't...
Or date of actual job creation?
Yeah. It's probably a good idea.
This is a position, yeah.
Support that amendment?
That was it?
Yeah, we have a vote, we have a vote.
Commissioner Donz?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Mr. Jaques?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaper?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson? Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to accept the minutes?
I'll second.
In favor, yes. Motion to support to accept the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? Motion carries. All right, on to public safety.
Yes, our task for the day is to run a book emergency management coordinator position, and I think at this point, I'm going to ask Sheriff Paul Hagan to tell us his recommendation.
Thank you. Over the course of December, we put the posting up. We had four people sign the posting, and then one withdrew, so we were down to three. Chairman Donz and Under Sheriff Falk and myself met with the three candidates through an interview process, and we decided unanimously to, to give it to Sergeant Brian Gutowski. Brian's been with our agency for over ten years. He's been a supervisor for two years, and he has a great relationship with the fire departments. I believe he's been with the fire department for thirteen years, if I'm not mistaken. So he brings a wealth of knowledge, but even more key is he brings the supervisor role to our office. This position is a dual role. It's emergency management, but it's also under the umbrella of the sheriff, and we use that person as, as a supervisor, as a lieutenant. So it gave me great pleasure to keep it at our office and as a lieutenant spot, for no other reason than that, as a supervisor at our place. So our recommendation was clear, and it is for Brian.
Mr. Gutowski, would you like to address the board?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Like I, I said to the Public Safety Committee, it's a, it's a, an exciting opportunity if I am put in that position. Been in public safety pretty much my entire adult life, the fire department with Filer Township since I was a junior in high school, and with the sheriff's office since two thousand seven. Before that, I actually started law enforcement in two thousand and five. So to be able to put kind of my public safety experience together with the police and fire and, and working to improve emergency management and emergency preparedness for Manistee County, something that's very exciting for me and really excited to take that next step in my career. Thank you.
Kind of grew up in the field.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for the sheriff or Mr. Gutowski?
The only comment I would make, maybe the sheriff can answer this, is as in the position you just discussed in personnel, you probably should set an effective date, and I don't know what date. You have planned if it's today, or if it's next week, or when it is, but...
No, we didn't have a date picked yet. It, it's nice that it's right in our, to speak, because the transition will be fairly, fairly easy.
So are you looking at today, tomorrow, yesterday?
The only thing I didn't, didn't know to, to answer that is, is like where the wage comes in. I don't know if that's gonna play a part. I don't believe it is. So, yeah, my recommendation would be the sooner the better, so we can get this position started.
So on an immediate effective date?
Kevin, what do you think?
Was there anything that had to be? No, but we did, we did discuss, I know, but I took the position, it was required immediately that it, within two years. I'm not sure if you want that as a stipulation for a pay raise, or...
We can probably talk about that, but...
Yeah, we're gonna have to do that offline.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would say effective immediately.
I, I'm sure we don't want, because right now, the responsibility falls on my shoulders. I'm sure we don't want that. No, well, not at all.
I was leaving town at her.
But, but even if we, if we didn't do it immediately and gave it through this, through, through January, that'll allow us some time to, to do a transition as well. So I'm good either way, whatever the board feels.
I, I think it, I like the recommendation that, you know, we do this immediately.
So we have a motion in support for Mr. Brian Gutowski to become the new emergency manager.
I think it's probably a good idea to make it immediate. In case something happens, you have an emergency manager coordinator in place moving today.
We've got that. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaques?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaper?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Donz?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Looking forward to it.
Well, as far as other committee business, we didn't hear from Sheriff LaHigan. He gave us the full Doug and Tony show of his life. He was very interesting. He's a good guy for the job. And we also heard from Lieutenant Kazal, Kazal Allen, for the jail administrator job. Thank you.
We do have our twenty seventeen committee schedule in there also.
So I, I had something, something about that, actually. There were a couple of changes. If we're talking about the first Friday of the month at one PM, the first Friday of August is August fourth. It states the eleventh on here, and then it looks like October fifth is scheduled, but October sixth is the Friday.
And that's probably due to the fourth Tuesday of the month, in the meeting.
I, I don't, I don't believe public safety is affected by that. We probably just put the round dates down, and either on the agenda or in the minutes, we will make, I will make a note of that to make sure before we do post that, that she has the correct first Friday dates. It was all first Fridays.
Yeah.
Except for February.
Except for the February month.
Maybe it was October and whatever month, just, um, August?
What dates did you say were in August?
Um, August and October.
All right, I'll make sure that that gets checked, so we get it posted correctly.
Thank you.
You have some good information.
I've been working with Mitch Deish and the medical examiner. We have a medical examiner I think the law enforcement community is very happy with. We pay her a salary, a very small salary, about twenty thousand dollars a year. We ship all of our autopsies to either Grand Rapids or Calumidoo, which costs a lot of money. We have a capable medical examiner that I think the prosecutor's office is very happy with having autopsies performed by her. It's Dr. Gazlomowski, and so we are in the process of, and Benzie County is in a state of flux with their medical examiner position. What they wanna do is share that medical examiner with us, where we each pay the medical examiner approximately twenty thousand dollars per year, which would make her salary about forty thousand. We are then, and we will have an agreement. We've got a draft agreement right now that's being reviewed and being looked at by attorneys, and then there will also be an agreement between a funeral home in Benzie County and a funeral home in Manistee County to actually perform the autopsies in those locations, which is in, which our medical examiner tells us is very common in small communities. We are working with a couple funeral homes in both those counties to get that agreement in place, which will save transportation dollars. We, we in Manistee also have a cold storage agreement with Westyard Medical Center to be able to put a body in, in storage if needed. There's one drawer available, so we've already, you've already approved that. So we are well on our way to, to, to doing that. We're getting an office location in the courthouse here for the medical examiner. There's some resolutions and some approvals that will come before you and Benzie County, probably within the next month. If not the next month, by March for sure, and so we're very close to, to bringing that to you. We're kind of excited about that. It's just one more cooperative effort, both Benzie and, and Benzie's thrilled about it, and I think our medical examiner is thrilled about it, too.
Tom, we're gonna have two colleagues who are gonna assist you, Casper, we, we only have Wood Guler as one.
That's, that's Benzie's issue for storage for them. We have an agreement for us, with our hospitals. Well, they've got their own issue that they're dealing with, where they may buy someone and have it located at one of the funeral homes or whatever. In our situation, it's, it's very good because it's, it's a twenty-four hour staff location, which is what the medical examiner tells us we need when we get into those kind of situations.
I wonder why they don't want us to follow up with us?
They may.
Yeah, just thinking of, because that's a monthly facility as well, so I was hoping that tonight.
I, I, I have no idea what they're gonna do as far as storage.
Something we're not involved in.
They'll take care of themselves as far as storage.
Tom, what is our contingency plan? If we need more than one drawer?
Um, there is none, other than maybe Macosta County. Macosta County has a very good brand new facility for performing autopsies. We actually, the medical examiner and I both visited that place. It's, it's great, but it's an hour and a half drive. It's more transportation. It'd be transportation for a medical examiner, so we're working on it.
I would just like to make sure that you have a contingency plan. If I should need more than one drawer at a time.
And I have discussed this with Mason County also, because they might be getting towards the end of their medical examiners.
Tenure, if you will. That, that'd be great, because we have, I think, a very capable medical examiner. If we can't, if we can't afford to pay her, it could, it could, it could end.
All right, a motion being ordered to accept the Public Safety Committee report of January thirteenth.
How is that motion?
How important is that discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
What you say was so funny, or two hundred bucks?
It's, it's really not designed to save us money, but I think in the long run, it's funny.
The Beaches Health Care Coalition does have refrigerated center.
I have a question. John made a question. The Sheriff of Vulcan, committee of an active shooter training being held in February ninth.
Is that scheduled for September, February ninth?
That's, that's not for us. That's for us, that's gonna be held at the emergency operations room at Sheriff's Department.
It's open to law enforcement. It's open to schools and government for the person. It's open to schools and government for the first session and then first responders for the second session. An hour and a half to two hours timelines for, you put it on in two years, three years ago. All really good, very informative.
Could you tell me from the comments?
Ken's gonna get me a flyer or something and I'm gonna distribute it to all of our departments. And then I was thinking, depending on room size, how much room, we could maybe get someone from each of the offices to attend and then bring that back to the rest of the office.
Lisa has done a great job in getting those types of exercises scheduled. We're doing it basically because of her efforts. That's good.
I was wondering, did you have, did you have a little knowledge of...
I think you're invited to all those, I think the last one you were invited to, you may not have been able to come. They only last about half hour, they're pretty quick.
The Regional Summit, Regional Summit met on January 12th. Kind of our kickoff session for this year. But the only thing that was accomplished, worthy of talking about, is the date has been set for, like, September 2017, from 7:30. We talked a little bit about trying to maintain our quest, always change it up every year so that people get to see something different at the Regional Summit each year. This year's Regional Summit, I wasn't able to attend, I heard was very successful with the new format that we had. We had breakout sessions in the morning. So, keep gear to the ground, more to come out next year, next month, after the meeting, and we're gonna have a good one.
I did do some follow-on, we've got that date reserved at the location we were talking about, but it needs to go through the process.
We discussed numerous locations and we will be changing. Everybody likes to go to Norman, but we felt that it was necessary to go to other places. And it looks like we, we're gonna be going, but we just gotta keep under our hat right now.
Motion made order to accept the Regional Summit report.
Make that motion.
Motion support, further discussion. All in favor? Those opposed? Chair is. Tom, you're up.
I don't have anything other than what is on your agenda under miscellaneous control of the board items. Two things, one is, I would like to at least have some indication from commissioners wishing to attend the MAC conference in March. It begins on basically the evening, there's not much going on the evening of March, monthly March 27th. You could actually get there late at 6, 7 o'clock and you wouldn't really miss anything. The meet event is on Tuesday, and then usually by noon on Wednesday it's done. So you can be home by mid-afternoon or late afternoon on Wednesday. That's just information for the two new commissioners if you're thinking about going. If you are thinking about going, please let me know. If you can let me know today, that would be great. If you want to wait a few more days, that's fine. I just didn't want to wait until the February meeting to find out, because we gotta make, we gotta make room reservations, we gotta pay your registration, and so...
The meeting location is Benzie?
Same place, the Radisson in Lansing.
Do they have an agenda yet?
I haven't seen anything yet, but I know that'll be coming any time soon. Anybody else thinking about going?
It's not a silent auction, kid.
I'm going too, Tom.
Okay, so I've got Mark Burdsham, Brooke Schaefer, Paulie Jakush, I didn't say that right, and Richard Schmidt, so far.
And I'll discuss them.
I'm not sure if I can spare the time off of work.
There is a one, just so you know, there is a one-day registration too, if you just wanted to come on Tuesday or come late Monday night and stay Tuesday and just pay for the one-day registration. I think there's a lesser registration. The meet of the conference is really just Tuesday. It's Tuesday.
Yeah, I could consider one day, but, you know, otherwise it would essentially be three days.
Just let me know in the next week or so. And then I talked to the board chair about the fact that, especially with two new commissioners, it might be time for you to review your strategic planning documents and update it. I thought it would be good if the AES, Tamara of the SWinka, would help us with that. We'll probably only take one, one meeting like you've done in the past. You adopted your original strategic plan in 2014, September 2014. I think you updated it in February of last year, and it's probably time to review that again, especially with a new board seated. Tamara has given me some dates. It'd be nice if we could schedule a date right now, but if that's not possible, we can look at that. She is not, she gave me some February dates that she is not available, which are the 1st, the 3rd, the 8th, the 13th, the 20th, 17th, and the 27th. Sounds like she's available any other day. I don't know if you want to try to schedule something.
Sounds like the 17th might, might be good, that's a Friday, that might be best.
17th, she is not available.
Well, she's not.
What about the 24th?
Are we looking at February?
Yep.
I'm not available on that one.
That's why it's good to do it here, otherwise Julia's been three days without a phone.
I'm not available?
She's not gonna be available.
Oh, okay.
She available on the 10th?
10th, it sounds like she's available.
We have public safety at 1:00, we couldn't do it in the morning.
That works for me.
At what time, 10:00 or 9:00?
Well, we've got, we've got a 1:00 public safeties on the 10th, so...
I'm available.
Yeah, 9:00.
We just may need to make sure that, you know, we're gonna be doing a review of the strategic plan. We're involved in a process at the airport where we have actually increased the complexity of our strategic plan. There's quite a bit involved left, so let's make sure that there is a review of the strategic plan rather than, I don't know what you'd call it.
If, well, I guess I'd say what's the purpose of the review? Is it to just educate the commissioners on the plan, or is it to review our progress? Because if we made progress, we're gonna want to make changes.
Well, the other thing we need to do is we need to do, we need to identify all the actions that have occurred in the last year in terms of our goals and objectives. So I know Tom's gonna do that and go back through and identify where we've done something that matches up with an element of our strategic plan. If we don't do that, then this is really a waste of time.
Right, you need to review what you've accomplished, what you're not. I think if you go through the plan, maybe category by category, and say, and we can chip in Russ and I and Lisa as much the county clerk, any staff that might attend can tell you where we're at with certain things, what we've accomplished. You'll know some of the things you've accomplished also, and then you can update. And say some of this might have changed a little bit, there's some things that have probably happened in the last year that you might want to start working on.
This is a work session.
This will be a study session, and then at your March meeting, you would adopt the updated plan.
Okay, so we will have an oversight, we will review accomplishments, goals and objectives that have been met, and then we will rework areas that we need to rework.
Yeah, I will tell Tamara, we'll review our, review the plan and review our progress and then...
And that's within the scope of what I would expect. But what we're doing in, at the airport is going in to actually do measurable standards to see how we're coming on it. So we've actually gone one step ahead where the county is as far as the strategic plan. And that's taken us, what, around our third meeting, starting to our third meeting to accomplish that. I just don't want to go there right now with that one, what we're going to be done.
We're gonna do this at AES office, we're gonna do this here?
Her comment to me was that she would like to do it at AES office. I think it's just sometimes better for you to get off-site, away from the courthouse, talk about this. So we would post it for February 14th at 9:00 at the AES. We will make sure you all get reminded of that. We'll get that scheduled.
Okay, anything else, Tom?
That date okay with you, John? We always forget to ask the county clerk if she's available.
Anything else, Tom?
That is all I have.
All right, Mr. Strebe is here. You have five minutes of fade.
Information, are you due to? You should have in your packet, I believe, something called a resolution of intent. This is one of many, 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 many forms that are required from MDOT this time of year to apply for funding for the next fiscal year. Basically, it's saying that next fiscal year, which starts next October for us, that Manistee County intends to provide transportation services for the citizens. Also that you are maiming myself to answer all the questions that MDOT will be calling with. And there's actually a part in the middle there, which is a very, obviously very condensed preliminary budget, the actual budget that goes in, it's a few pages long, but this is the condensed numbers. It is a, it will be, as we're intending right now, surplus budget. That part has actually been approved by our board at the last meeting, but we need the entire resolution to be adopted by the commissioners. This is an annual process.
Annual, one more annual votes for Dalrymple.
One of many.
You sure you didn't want Tom to go on answering to the state?
If he would like to, that's fine with me. I don't.
I don't.
Yeah.
All right, a motion would be in order for the resolution of intent for Dalrymple, approval of the resolution of intent to apply for financial assistance for fiscal years 2018 under Act 51 and the Public Act of 1951 has amended. Motion in support, further discussion. Click call roll please.
Mr. Jakush?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mr. Batson?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yeah.
Mr. Dads?
Yes.
Mr. Goodman?
Wasn't even five minutes.
Anything else? I got time left. We were, we were busy last year. We hit almost 142,000 rides, which is sort of an record, but...
But I saw that kind of jump out in English fares. It's pretty good, pretty good fare receipts.
Yes, and I mean, it's, you know, it was hand in hand, but yes, we were very busy. New Year's Eve was up a little bit to about 14%, I guess, but still down around 350, I think, which is a fraction of...
Chat pose is over.
Yeah, well, and yeah, we did serve some this year, but it's still a fraction of ours and part years that we used to see. 15, 20 years ago, we'd have 2,500 a night, New Year's Eve, so...
Times have changed.
Times have changed, but it's over. Yeah, but, you know, that's 350 people who couldn't, weren't out on the ropes, driving under the influence.
How many people do you provide rides for their point of work? Is there any?
Well, we don't keep track of that specifically, but we did extend our hours, as you remember, starting November 1st. And we're averaging about those two hours a night, we're going about 25 a night. Obviously, those aren't all workers either, but quite a few of them are coming home from work. At the end of the day, we're, when we closed at 5:00, we couldn't get a lot of those people, so... We're pretty happy with the way they extended hours ago, and just as a new thing, it's, it's actually, I think, been a little bit busier than what I thought it would be. But it takes a lot, a long time for people to catch on, you know, we've been open until 5:00 for, I don't know, 30 years or something, so...
Well, the people that, it's probably not that many, I don't know, but the people that are going to work and using Dalrymple, if there are, I'm assuming there are a few, they are dropped off right at their place of employment or they are...
And we also, that was also part of that new term funding that we got, we also are opening a half hour earlier in the morning. So we can get those folks at 5:30 and...
That'd be good information. I'd be interested in knowing how many people are actually riding Dalrymple to go to their place of employment.
We have those numbers, I don't, I don't have them right in front of me.
Okay, but you do.
We can get those numbers.
Okay, I'd like to see this number.
But it's, it's probably not as much as, you know, as, there's just, there's so many places. Like people say, well, we need to do more with getting folks to riders, you know, for their work, 24 hours a day. The shift at 3:00 in the morning or whenever it is, you know, we have trouble covering that one, but... So it's, you know, it just depends on their young elders. But we're available, good hunk of the day, though, so...
That's good.
It certainly helped.
Can you just keep up the building on the corner of Washington and Memorial Drive?
Yes.
Which is like a garage?
Yes.
That was built, is in, inside those front doors?
The very front part on the corner. Well, Commissioner Dadsen probably remembers a little bit of this when we were putting that up. But at the time, the thought was that, and the plan was, and I think it still is the plan, was that there were going to be intercity routes running through Manistee. They were, they actually had routes planned from Traverse City, going down to Chicago, and another one going as far as Muskegon and then going over to Grand Rapids. So those routes were planned. So the idea behind that area in the front was going to be a waiting area. We had phone hookup, restrooms, everything, so that if the bus came in at 10:00 at night, there'd be someplace for him to stay and either call or whatever they gotta do. So that was the main intent of that area. Right about the time the garage went up, MDOT cut the intercity funding, and so not only did those routes never come to fruition, but they cut other routes. Intercity isn't even as big as it was back then. So, so that was the plan, you know, it was, it was a good idea at the time, but it just never came about. So the restrooms, of course, we do still keep open, like for the farmer's market and anytime there's a festival or something going on, we make sure that those are open. There was actually plans back then to put up restrooms. I can't remember who was Rotary, maybe, was going to put permanent restrooms on that side of the river. And since we were doing it, they contributed a little bit of money towards ours. And so instead of them doing their own, we just have them there, so, so that was another part of the intention.
So the garage is like 100% occupied, that garage?
Yeah, the garage part is, that's, you know, we use that.
There's a lock system between getting into the garage.
Yes, yes, there is.
I just, people gathering every once in a while, like I come in late at night, you know, and I just don't know. It's not really well lit, you can kind of see in the building, but I just kind of was wondering, I've seen it a couple times there, so... Where people gathered there?
Inside?
No, no, outside the door, kind of that open area.
Yeah, yeah. Now, the, yeah, everything is locked off, of course, at night, so the garage and the door between there. But anytime that we think the restrooms might be useful, we certainly keep them open. Certainly every day during the summer, they're open, all they want to.
Mr. Strebe, you mentioned that in the MDOT funding for the intercity routes had dried up, and you also mentioned that that was kind of still in the works. Can you talk about potential future plans for intercity routes?
Those routes are still there, that still, last I knew, that was still part of MDOT's long-range plan. But back then around 2000, in that timeframe, they were not only cutting funding for us, but then they also cut funding for the intercity buses. And so, of course, instead of getting the route... And so, of course, instead of getting the routes, the intercity buses had to contract, and so there's, uh, you know, they go up to, uh, through Cadillac and stuff now, but, uh, I think they had buses in the UP. I don't, I'm not sure, but I don't think they go that far anymore, so it's, uh... So, I'm sure if funding ever became available for intercity buses, they'd probably reinstate some of the routes that they were actually using before, and then, you know, so, who knows? Somewhere down the line, it could still be available. I, I thought it was a great idea, I was, we were kind of excited about it back at the time, but, uh, obviously, it's, uh, you know, gone by the wayside now, but, yeah, those plans are still out there. It's just a matter of, money's gotta come from somewhere, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
You're welcome.
Now, the next thing, I'd kind of like to back up to, uh, prior to Richard's, uh, part here on the agenda is the Central Wellness Board, as you know, Karen had a scheduling conflict, so she had to step off that board, and Pauline agreed to, uh, fill that, that slot for us, and, uh, it's a full board appointment. It's not an appointment of the chair, so we have, uh, one for Pauline to take that over, to fill, uh, Karen's spot, and also to re-up, uh, Richard's position. So, with that, we'll need to, uh, make a motion to, uh, get rid of that. A motion, one at a time?
Do you mind moving back to, um, please?
You're a different person.
The place Pauline is making a vacancy.
Support for that?
Support.
A motion of support for Commissioner Jankusch to, uh, fill our unexpired term. Yes, with that, quick call roll, please.
Chris Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Chris Jankusch?
Yes.
Take a motion to re-put Mr.... Support for that?
So?
Offside. Okay, we have a motion of support for Mr. Schmidt, uh, for a, uh, three-year term, beginning April first. Quick call roll, please.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Berg, Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jankusch?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Dial-A-Ride, where, uh, Richard's gone, but, uh, changed their meeting date to make Pauline available to fill that site. Thank you.
I'm glad you didn't mention that, I am.
That was... It was, it was, it was painful.
Painful?
Painful. But we made, we made it.
All right, uh, reports from individual commissioners. Let's move around the table. Brooke, you have anything special?
Uh, no, I don't.
Karen? Nick?
Not today.
Richard?
Just that I'm really keeping track of yourself is of use, honey.
That's good.
That's it.
All right, Mark?
Really, I'm in a meeting to have individuals...
Not too much, yes.
Yes. I just want you to know, I did attend the fair board meeting. And, uh, all of you know, I have a pretty extensive background for the fair. I was on that board for in excess of twelve, about ten years. That board has always been a very hardworking board, a very unpaid board. They do what they do because they love the Manistee County Fair. I know they change people right now. They're really into the race mode. There's some really enthusiastic board members there. They plan on having four races again this year to utilize the crash as much as they can. They also know that to get a race car to come in there, like Sprint's under, there's a eleven thousand dollar purse cap today. You cannot possibly put enough people in the seats to pay for that. They are, right now, in the process of going out and trying to promote corporate sponsorship for the race program. Again, this is all volunteer on their part, so as much as, um, I do, I, I want to let the board know that they are trying very hard to make the program work up there. I don't know, I only attended one meeting, but it was almost like I'd never left.
Is that good or bad?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. Well, when I left, it wasn't so good.
How's your attitude?
I'll keep you appraised if it works.
No, I'm guessing you have not had a Fair Lake and improvement board meeting as of yet.
No, not until April.
Okay, same thing with Bar Lake. Uh, to give you a quick road commission update, uh, Mr. Rochelle was, uh, they encheraged in. We have a new vice chair, which is Mr. Russell. The building is gone for, from Calva, so that's gonna be going on tax bills, which is good. They received a hundred thousand, and they're back pay, or they're back rent, and the tax has been brought up to, to date. So, that's all good.
The gentleman who was there is the one that got purchasing?
Yeah, he, he wound up getting some financial backing, was able to accomplish it. So, I think everybody's happy at the end of the day.
Where'd you sell your thousand dollars?
Uh, they're gonna wind up putting it into murders due to their, uh, recommendation from their accountant. If they felt that was gonna get the most bang for their buck.
Did he buy the entire piece there?
That's my understanding. Uh, I may be wrong on that, but I doubt it.
Because I know, I think the road commission still had a salt shed there or something that they were using.
You talked about renting that.
Yeah, are they gonna, you know, are they gonna be renting that from the owner, or... I'll, I'll check with Mark and make sure. The chair, the chair. The whole thing is sold, the whole thing is sold. Entire thing.
So, will they have to relocate that salt right there?
Well, if we'd be on a, maybe they'll rent that area from...
He's already using it for storage for rentals. He's already moved stuff, and that's why they had moved all their equipment out of the, the buildings, because he's heated it out so he could put trailers and house trailers and things and stuff.
Yeah, it's not that, it's not, I mean, when you think about Calva, it's not that far from the current road commission building.
The housing salt problem is probably minor compared to all the other problems of the current prior...
Yes.
Wouldn't you agree, Russ? So, this is probably good that the property is...
It's, it's a good thing that it's...
Yeah, it was, it really is. There are all kinds of taxes.
And all the delinquent taxes were paid on that, so they did come in and pay, make all those payments, so that's over and done with.
And that property in, in, next to Myers, that's all still, I mean, they're, they, like, the owner of that place pays the taxes, and everything's up just up there, okay?
I believe that's been sold for years.
You did empathize to him that he does have taxes due every year now?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think he's aware. Uh, Airport Authority, I think it kind of went into it a little bit, updated its strategic plan, but...
Yes, and, uh, they're still waiting for ownership documents to get passed to the FAA, and... We looked at the, uh, annual expansion, trying to come back up to, probably, eve to spring, so we need that building completed this year. Uh, hopefully, we can, we can still put the building up for a hundred thousand dollars. I think the bids that we got on the, uh, building before were a little higher than a hundred, a hundred thousand, correct? Yep, but, uh, uh, things are moving on. One of the, uh, one of the subjects that keeps coming up is, is the necessity to get some type of transport from the airport into the city, from the airport to Crystal Mountain, the airport to Arcadia, because that's, that's probably one of the most difficult, uh, hurdles to get over relative to increasing people's interest to come here. They can get the airport, but then how do they get from here to there? Car rentals, uh, while we do have a car rental service, uh, it's not a national brand. It's not like Enterprise or, or some, somebody like that. So, that's some of the things that we're dealing with relative to this AES. This has been, been given positions of championship where we're going to go out and look at specific items. My particular thing is, is transportation, uh, from the airport to all the satellite areas. So, there are things happening at the airport. I'll be going to my first, uh, airport managers' conference, uh, February twenty-third, twenty-fourth, to meet some of these people, the FAA, that I keep hearing about, talking about, to get the thanks of, you know. And, uh, so I'm kind of looking forward to that.
To, to, um, like, it's not a twenty-four-hour service, you know, to transport people. It's only at times that the planes come in.
Right.
Which they don't come in in the middle of the night. They do a private one, like, so, would Dial-A-Ride?
The problem with Dial-A-Ride is, uh, you could get someone there to, to go get them and bring them into the city, but if they want to go to Crystal Mountain or Arcadia, that's out of the Dial-A-Ride venue. They can't go out of, out of the county. Right?
Well, the Traverse City route.
You know, so...
Drop the town to Hillborough?
We're going, yeah.
County line.
You gotta walk four, four miles that way to get to where you're going. No, it's, uh, you know, I, 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 I myself am, am, am going to focus my research on providing a, an airport shuttle, you know? But that brings up issues also, who drives the shuttle, you know, what kind of licensing do you have? Who pays for the shuttle, et cetera, so it's, it's a very, uh, immature thought process right now, but we're gonna figure it out. So...
Well, I guess with that, uh, that takes us up to one thing that was in your packet, that was on page thirty-one from, uh, Richard Wilson sent us a note regarding to, uh, legislation that was passed, and the hospital sent a, uh, letter to the MDOT. And this is something, Tom, if you think we should weigh in on, I'd, I'd, no issue with that.
I received that copy from Mr. Wilson, I think just for informational purposes. I put it in your board packet, and I did when, uh, Mr. Batson and I were talking to the, uh, the hospital administrator, uh, on a, on a different matter last week, so, you know, would it be helpful for the county board to also weigh in on this and suggest the reduced speed limit passed the hospital, and he said, "It ain't hurt." So, I thought you might want the chairman, with approval of this whole board, to write a letter, which I can draft, very similar to Mr. Wilson's letter, saying the county board of commissioners supports the hospital's request to reduce the speed limit of, basically, M twenty-two, or M fifty, or M fifty-five to M twenty-two, roughly, um, as a forty-five mile, forty-five mile an hour speed limit, I think. That's in some legislation now that wasn't there before, and the hos...
Be correct, it's two thousand feet.
Right.
And hopefully, MDOT would have enough sense to, to not go to fifty-five from fifty-five intersection to the two-thousand-foot buffer zone. You would think they would continue that on through, past that, at forty-five, but... We don't know from meetings we've had.
Yeah, I had a conversation with someone at, at MDOT a few months ago about that, and, um, at that time, what they had told me was that they had done some studies of the area, and they could not justify it on a seasonal basis to reduce the speed limit, which I think is really unfortunate. I had comments from several citizens, um, stating that they really felt that that was a dangerous area through that section of U.S. thirty-one. So, I, I would be very much in favor of, of a letter from the board.
That, that has changed now, though. When, when you had your conversation, the new legislation was not in effect.
Correct.
The new legislation raises the speed limit on most of our high, on many of our highways from fifty-five to sixty-five, and I think on some expressways from seventy to seventy-five.
Right.
And then, I think with the help of our own, uh, state representative, a, uh...
Carval.
A Carval was put in the legislation, which allows hospital zones to go down to forty-five miles an hour.
Which is only a few in the state, so, basically, I think maybe six or seven.
There aren't many at all, but, um, yeah, I would, I would need support or a letter from the board. It's a, it's a dangerous section for them.
I think formal action by this board, authorizing the chair to send that letter, would be, would carry more weight.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, because the chair does not want to speak on behalf of the board unless the board speaks. This is something the board can do.
I will make that motion, the chair will, uh, sign the letter stating our support of the, uh, speed of forty-five.
Yeah, I'll second that. Would it, would it be, um, are we able to stay in there? Because it's not just staying from the hospital, the MLB building, um, starting from, you know, south of the MLB building is really all the way out, actually, to the, um, up to the casino. That's another interesting area, but, uh, even the airport area, I mean, if we could get back coverage, because, like you said, I, I'm concerned they'll just go...
I, I can't imagine them doing that, but who knows?
Yeah.
Who knows?
Well, if you make a, make a, no, any letter that you appreciate, then...
Our, our hospital and it's...
What the legislation pertains to, plus consideration of maintaining that forty-five from the F fifty-five intersection up through to F twenty-two, we could add that in, in the letter from us.
I would make my, I would say, one speaker.
Can I, can I make one, right, maybe?
Wait, wait for a while.
Would you send that letter to Matt also?
All in favor of that letter?
Very.
Those opposed? Most who care, thank you. Now, with that, we're up to public comment. Mr. Mayor, welcome.
Thank you. Thirty at the World Theater will be a celebration. The, uh, city will receive their, uh, redevelopment-ready, uh, certificate certification. We will be the only ninth, only the ninth community in the State of Michigan to receive that designation. Uh, and there's been a lot of work, uh, from the chamber, uh, from the visitor center, uh, from our own planning department, AES, a lot of people in the community have contributed to the effort to get us to that point, so I think it's gonna be quite a celebration. Uh, everybody's invited to attend World Theater, uh, ten-thirty. I can see a lot of people, though. On Saturday, uh, Mayor Protem Salinski and myself attended a regional fisheries seminar that, uh, is held at West Shore College, uh, every year. Uh, one of the interesting things there is that people rate their satisfaction versus their expectation when they come to a community for a, a particular event. Manistee had the highest rating, um, among the communities that were surveyed. The people letting them, people felt more satisfied with the experience they had fishing out of, uh, Manistee versus what they affected when they came here. It was quite a surprise to a number of people that were there, but also a big plus for us and something, um, hopefully, that we can market. Uh, one more thing, is I just got an, an email during this meeting that indicated that, uh, the developer who's interested in, uh, four hundred River Street, the former GLIC, uh, building, will be giving, uh, an update presentation at the council meeting tonight for anyone that's interested. I know I've, I've heard from a lot of citizens that have interest in, uh, in the development. Uh, so, I would let you know that that's coming on the agenda tonight as an added item, but, other than that, thank you very much.
Question on, uh, the satisfaction with, uh, fishing? Well, did they, did they go into any detail on that? Would that be because of the catch, the amount they kept?
I think, I think, uh, you know, it was more or less, uh, a, a survey that says, you know, what was your expectation coming into this community, you know, for your activity for the day? And how satisfied were you with the results based on expectation? And, uh, the Manistee was the only one in the green, uh, area of the rating above, uh, the four-point scale on a one to five. Most of them, most of them were in the three-something range, or, or down in the yellow, uh, in, in the two area, so...
Overall satisfaction?
Yeah, they, they go into a great...